You're what?
It's me talking this time.
It's okay.
All right, six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, if you'd please, and a prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Father, and we thank you. We thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for the opportunity to live here in this community, and we just ask that everything we do bring honor and glory to you this evening.
Amen. All right, I am President, Alderwoman Dent.
Present.
Alderman Kinsey.
Present.
Alderman Whalen.
Present.
Alderman Letchworth.
Present.
City Administrator Burbidge.
Present.
City Clerk Coler.
Present.
City Attorney Weber. Bullock Works Director Payne.
Present.
Chief of Police Chase. Finance Director Stacy Houston. Economic Development Director Sutterfield. We have, let me see, Josh Hunt from our wastewater, and Chris McDurick from the Water Department. I think that's all our city staff. Next up is approval of tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Now, we'll call for the vote, Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Next up is approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I will call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
And Alderman Dent.
Yes.
We have no one for public comment. Next item up is cemetery presentation.
Okay, so we wanted to share with you, I know I have shared with you, the members of the board, that we've been doing a mapping project for the cemetery. So I wanted to do just a brief demonstration and brag on a few of our employees who've really been focusing on this project. So you've all heard us talk about diamond maps before, and so we're using this platform, it's a GIS platform, cloud-based, to map out our utilities in the city, stormwater, this is infrastructure, sorry, but it also has a cemetery mapping feature, and so it's something that they just rolled out, I believe, December a year ago. And so, a huge, huge kudos goes to Devon, our guy behind the curtain back over here. He has done the actual mapping and inputting all of these plots onto the cemetery. Wanda, our Assistant City Clerk, and then our three utility ladies, Shannon, Wendy, and Mandy, have been entering into Excel the old handwritten cemetery ledgers.
Awesome.
Okay, so that's quite an undertaking. You figure, the cemetery goes back to eight, early eighteen hundreds? Okay, late eighteen hundreds, mid to late eighteen hundreds, and all of that has been in manual handwritten ledgers. So when staff, when someone has come in asking, hey, I need help to find a relative in the cemetery, they have literally had to start reading through handwritten ledgers, going back, hoping somebody had a year they were buried, because they were sorted by year, but if you didn't have a year, you're just starting from the beginning and reading backwards, hoping you can come across it. So this will assist staff tremendously and will help the public in finding loved ones who are buried here, and capturing some data and making it public. This map is not public-facing yet, but we wanted to share with you all, kind of do a quick demonstration of what's in here. Now, you'll notice, on this map, just a second, it'll pop back up, we have a blank spot over here. This is where, early, turn of the nineteenth century or twentieth century, early nineteen hundreds, we had a tornado come through and took out the tombstones in this section, okay? So we have the names of the individuals who are buried here, but we don't know exactly where they're buried in here. We're still trying to figure out what we're gonna do to get their information in here. Obviously, it's not gonna look like the rest of the cemetery with the individual plots, but, so that's why that section's still like that. There are a few graves with tombstones or headstones in this section that are still there, as well as this area right here. This is referred to as the American Legion section, or the first American Legion section. And the reason those aren't plotted out just yet, all of the rest of this and the nice neat squares was surveyed, and so the graves are this many feet apart, and there, you know, so much walking paths between. In those sections, and we kind of had a conversation about this among staff, in those early sections, the standard doesn't hold. And you think about it, in the eighteen hundreds, and they didn't have a backhoe to dig graves, and if you're digging a grave and you come across a very large rock or other obstacle, you move over. And so they're not the same set, it doesn't work, the mapping software, the same. So we're gonna have to do some manual adjustments for those areas. But Devon, over thirteen hundred plots in this map, so far?
Thirteen thousand.
Yes, thirteen thousand, thank you.
I thought, I thought we had.
Yeah, thirteen thousand so far, that are plotted out here. Now, when we go to upload, like I said, Devon has done all of the work in actually getting this physically into the map, but when we get into uploading the individual data, so as we zoom in, so all of the red, all of the individual plots that are red, means there's no data in those yet, okay?
Okay.
So when we, when the ladies and everyone, Devon's doing this now too, hand typing in all these handwritten into an Excel sheet, we can then upload that Excel sheet into these plots.
Okay.
Okay? Now, when you go, and I'm gonna zoom in some more here, when you go and you find one of these individual graves, and you click on it.
Yeah.
Okay, just a second. See if I can, it works a little differently, I'm not sure if I can get it to expand, we'll just scroll here. So you see for this one here, you can see, this is the Oregon Hayes Edition.
Uh-huh.
So you have F-28-8, and that's, I won't remember, but it's block, plot number, that's, that's the identifier, okay? So it's occupied by Delphia Mae Bacon, okay? And when we scroll her information down, forgive me, normally I have a mouse to do this with, whoops. We can see that she was born May 11th, 1932.
Uh-huh.
She passed away November 1st, 2015, and was buried on November 5th, 2015. If there is a Find a Grave reference for her, we enter that in that next line, so that that would be available to the public.
All right.
We chose to do that, we had talked about going through and trying to take pictures of every headstone, and Find a Grave, if it exists, they've already got it. They've got the headstones, the obituaries, as well as potentially other information. So we decided, if there's a Find a Grave link, we're just gonna insert that, rather than doing the work again. But then you'll see also, there's coordinates, so that's the Latin long, if someone's trying to find that grave, there's the Latin long coordinates for it. So, like I said, all the blue or purple, those have information for individuals in those plots. We'll be adding more as we go. It is, like I said, quite a task. This, I'll say, layer, okay, is burials. We're probably gonna end up with another layer that's cremations. In our cemetery, we allow one body burial and one cremation in the same plot.
Right.
And so they'll probably have to be, like I said, separate layers to the map, you'll have to pick which one you wanna look at. I'm trying to think, and we may have a few other layers, as we come across some very interesting information, things that happened over the years that don't fit nicely into the little blocks for cemetery mapping. I know Devon ran into, in the surveys, the more recent surveys were pretty simple, and then he ran into rods as a form of measurement, and then he ran into chains and links, and, you know, all these different types of measurements that they used in the past. So we also have some interesting things that have happened, and this is just normal course of a cemetery. You'll see, there's a green one, over here, just above that. And so the green is a disinterment, so that person was moved from that location to another one. So again, you'll see, there's the Find a Grave link there, so all of that individual's information, right there. So, the nice thing, like I said, it is not public-facing, but even now, if someone were to come into the office and, assuming we had that, that family member's information uploaded, then staff could come over here, and they could, you'll see the different layers there, at the very bottom is the cemetery plots. We click on that, and we come here, and there's a search feature. So if you know your loved one's name, or a date, birth, death, burial, anything like that, then staff could look them up. So as an example, we're just gonna look for Ruth, okay? Okay. So all of those yellow circles are where someone who has the name Ruth in their name is buried. Then you'll see this other piece, and I can't get it to expand, and my apologies, oh, I'm not sure where we took this, right there. But this other piece, where I did the search, if I could expand it, then it's gonna lay out like a spreadsheet, and you're gonna see, you can see the beginning of the name Ruth in the first name. Some of it, it might be that Ruth is the second name, it might be a nickname, but so long as the name Ruth shows up anywhere in their information, it'll pull them up. And again, forgive me, I'm not sure where I took this on the map here. There we go. So again, like I said, those yellow dots then, in the cemetery map, are everywhere someone with that name, sorry, guys, hopefully I don't make anyone motion sick here. And so if you identified over here in your spreadsheet piece which one you wanted, we'll say it's the third one down, or the fourth one down is the Ruth we're looking for, it'll take you to it. So for staff trying to assist the public in finding where someone is in the cemetery, this is going to exponentially speed up the process. But yeah, it'll take you right to that individual that you're looking for, with all of that person's details. You'll see this Ruth, Ruth Rambosek, my apologies if I murdered that name. She was born February 7th, 1922, and passed away December 24th, 2013. So like I said, it will tremendously speed up. Ideally, if someone had either their phone or an iPad that had its own subscription service, they could be out there in the cemetery and look it up right there.
Oh, okay.
So, so we have, we've talked about, we're not there yet, maybe next spring, when we have full-time cemetery staff there, that, that's something we do, is invest in an iPad for the cemetery personnel, so that they could assist folks who are there looking for a loved one.
Good.
Any questions?
Good idea.
So, like I said, this, this kind of leapfrogs us by, I think, several decades in, in our abilities to identify where things are. It will also speed up after there's a burial, sometimes it's a year, year and a half before the monument is placed, and so it's the same thing, they're having to go back through the written ledger for the last year and a half, trying to figure out where, where was that person placed, to identify, this will make it a matter of just minutes, so. No questions from the board?
No. Would the public be able to access this and do their own search?
I'm not sure about the search part, they will be able to access it, we will make it public-facing, it's not public-facing yet, because we're still.
Right, I understand.
And even after we make it public-facing, I'm sure we'll still be adding data, I mean, it's gonna take us a while to get it all converted. But they will be able to certainly go through and click on, on graves and see, I just don't know about the search feature.
Okay.
That's, that's a question we don't have answered yet.
All right.
Good job.
I just want to say thank you to staff for doing this. I was always concerned about, when you look at the records from everybody that's been buried in the cemetery, for the, the loss of the records, that now there's at least some type of electronical, digital.
Well, and it's done, this project has done a couple things, A, it's gotten it on a map, so that's, that's a huge step forward. The other thing it's done is we now have also that Excel file, so that master Excel file, so that within the office, there's that as well, so we'll have two electronic files of all of that data.
Good.
So yeah, so it's been, been an interesting, and, and I mean, we can sort and search the Excel files so much faster than, like I said, trying to read the handwritten, and that's if you can read the handwritten entries, because it's been quite an interesting task to interpret some of it, so.
I bet.
Anyway, that's what I got for you tonight on that.
And this will also, speaking of records, older records, since the cemetery is so old, this will, I've been working with the state archives in Jefferson City to preserve those books that are 140 years old, because they are falling apart, at this, they've been handled so many times, and so this keeps us from touching those, I can get them preserved, and then they'll, they'll be, for future, you know, 50 years from now, 75 years now from now, when we're all gone, they can still go back and look at these books, because they will have been preserved by the state.
And we don't have to access them all.
Yeah, and we don't have to keep touching them, because that just, it helps tremendously.
All right. All right, next up is new miscellaneous business, we have the AOC letter.
Okay, so this item, about a month ago, not quite a month ago, we all formally approved the abatement on consent for the wastewater treatment plant, so we are required per DNR to then, within 30 days of approval of the abatement on consent, to submit the schedule of improvements. Now, these are listed in the AOC document, they are part of the scope of work for Phase 2A that is underway in the beginning stages, but again, this is just the formality of making sure we submit this letter, so that's, that's what this is. Our engineers hoping we actually meet these dates a few months ahead of these that are listed, but this is what's listed in the AOC.
Josh, you got a chance to overview and look that over too, as well, right? All right. Any questions from the board? This time, do we have a motion for the AOC letter?
What do you mean?
A motion for the AOC letter?
I make a motion to approve and send the letter.
Do I have a second?
A second to motion.
Now, we'll call for the vote, Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
All right. Next up is the water tower RFQ approval.
Okay, so several months back, we had, we staff had approached both the Utility Advisory Committee and, and those of you on the board, about looking, issuing some requests for qualifications for companies that could perform water tower maintenance. And so this is a different concept from how we've historically addressed taking care of our water towers, and being an integral part of our system, we thought this was maybe something to at least look at. This is not how we budgeted for the current year, so that would be a change, but the idea is, this would take water tower maintenance, in the past, sometimes it fell subject to budget availability, it makes it tough, if it's a tight budget year, to make sure you fit, you know, we have budgeted in this year $450,000 to rehab the industrial park water tower. And so we have that budgeted this year, but every year, that's not an easy thing to do. This type of, of program would take in, and it would level out those expenditures, they would look at all four of our water towers, that includes our new one, and, and say, for a period of five or six years, what would it take to maintain all of those? That would include rehabbing the industrial park water tower, and then inspecting, so making sure all of our inspections per, that's required by the state, by DNR, are done in a timely fashion, and all maintenance, anything that's found, is taken care of when it's found.
Okay.
So no delaying it, no putting it off due to budgetary concerns, it would, and it would provide also, I've talked in the past about, for our utilities, the best case scenario is that we create kind of a level, a, a level line of expenditures, that we're not doing huge, like a $450,000 one year and not the next, that it levelizes those expenditures, so that we can help keep rates steady. So, we put out this request for qualifications, we got two responses back, McGuire and Viking. There, I can bring up their presentations, I have them here, they were as listed, excuse me, they were on the website as a separate under presentations on the website. Staff has reviewed them, their recommendations are in here, their scoring is in here, the utility committee also reviewed them, and they gave their recommendation. So staff and utility committee were both of the same opinion, and recommend moving forward with Viking. And so like I said, in this packet, you will see the scoring. At this point, it's listed as no fiscal impact to the city, because at this point, approval to move forward with one of the companies, just means that we would enter conversations and negotiations with them, to see what that would look like. A request for qualifications specifically doesn't ask for what would be your price to do this, because it's based on who's the most qualified to do the job. So, like I said, at this point, all that's asked of you all is, which company would you like for us to start entering those conversations with? The utility committee, that when we do, they would like to interview the committee and have some conversation with them as well, so that's, I, I stand for any questions that you all have.
I attended the utility meeting, so I got to listen to it, and, and I'm in favor of pursuing it with the recommendations from staff and the utility, to reach out and explore the possibilities with Viking. So I don't have any questions.
I only got one, is there like any initial added cost, like with them, us engaging, just to consult with them?
No.
About, okay. I just make sure that there wasn't.
Oh, we're entering the negotiations part, no.
Yeah, just make sure there wasn't no consulting page or anything like that, I just did, so.
Are there no questions?
I got none.
We need a motion.
All right.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve staff engaging Viking Industrial Coatings and discussions and preparations for the proposal and or contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I will call for the vote, Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Next up is our HP computer approval, purchase approval.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this item was, was presented in a previous meeting, but it's back on for approval, because the previous quote presented at our last meeting is no longer valid as the costs increased before the order was confirmed. HP has issued a new quote, which is valid for 30 days. The new cost reflects an increase of $216 from the previous quote. This quote for the eight desktops comes to $7,960, and this is a budgeted item.
All right, any questions?
No questions.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the HP computer purchase.
Do I have a second?
A second to the motion.
I will call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
All right. Next up, Resolution Number 23-2025.
Resolution Number 23-2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and the Merrimack Regional Planning Commission for Membership Services.
Questions?
Any motions?
This is a renewal of.
Right.
Yeah, our membership that we've had for, for years, and there's no increase, right, Stacy?
Any motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-2025 to renew the membership of MRPC.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I will call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
Next up, reading bill, second readings, Bill Number 3689.
Bill Number 3689, an ordinance establishing fees for dusk-to-dawn lights provided by the City of Salem, Missouri.
We went over it last time.
Yes.
Do you want me to go over it again? Do you want me to go over it again?
You guys want?
I'm good, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, figured I better throw it out there first, Adam Sully, okay. All right. Do I have a motion for Bill Number 3689?
I make a motion to approve Bill 3689, ordinance establishing fees for dusk-to-dawn lights.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have called for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
All right, next up, Bill Number 3690.
Bill Number 3690, an ordinance establishing criteria for determining utility service disconnects during extreme weather conditions provided by the City of Salem, Missouri.
Well, this is the one extending it for 72 hours, correct? Okay. Any questions from the board?
No question.
All right, do I have a motion for Bill Number 3690? Alright, do I have a motion for Bill Number 3690?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Number 3690.
Do I have a second?
I make, I'll second it, one of them.
You're approving or motioning or second?
I'll second 3690 bill.
Alright, do I, I'll call for the vote. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alright. Next, we got First and Second Readings. We'll start with Bill Number 3691.
Bill Number 3691, an ordinance amending the amounts of utility deposits for the City of Salem, Missouri. Permission to read Bill Number 3691, Second Reading by Caption Only.
Yes, please.
An ordinance amending the amounts of utility deposits for the City of Salem, Missouri.
Thank you.
So, we do have a slight change on this one. That's why it's on for First and Second Read. We did go over it last time, but I had mistakenly put that the fee, the refundable fee for the faucet meters was 170. Actually, what was recommended by Utility Committee was 100. And so, this reflects that change. This ordinance also has in it, though, the double, the deposit if a customer refuses to provide their social security number or other information that our credit, that our credit agency uses. So, it has both of those items.
Right. Any additional questions? Alright, do I have a motion for Bill Number 3691?
Did she read it the second time?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Bill Number 3691.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alright, next up, Bill Number 3692.
Bill Number 3692, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Salem, Missouri, an agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and the Ralla Area Drug Enforcement Task Force Raid. Permission to read Second Reading by Caption Only?
Yes, please.
Bill Number 3692, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Salem, Missouri, an agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri, and the Ralla Area Drug Enforcement Task Force Raid.
So, we do have a guest speaker here tonight to address this. If you all have questions about the agreement or what it's about.
Okay.
Is there any questions from the board?
No.
No? Alright, do I have a motion for Bill Number 3692?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Number 3692.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion for Bill 3692.
And we'll call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alright, fun part. Reports to city officials, boards and committees. Ms. Burbridge, you're up first.
So, I know you're all aware, because you were talking about it before the meeting, but MRPC banquet coming up on the twenty-third, that is a Thursday. It is an evening banquet. And so, yes, the mayor has been asked to give a speech. And Sean Bowlerjack, who is our MRPC Board Rep, will be joining us that evening. And we have a couple of staff. Carrie and myself and Tammy, right? Who will also be in attendance with you all. So, I think that's all that I have right now.
Okay.
Alright. Guess we'll start with my list of notes. Alright, first and foremost, we've got Scenic Rivers Industry, or the Shelter, Dent County Shelter Workshop. They'll be hosting their first annual haunted house, October seventeenth, eighteenth, and also October twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. They learned that the Bone Break Center was not doing their haunted trail this year. They knew that they had to step it up, so they're looking for donations to help assist with some of their programs that they have over there. So, if you need, for more information, you can contact Lena Jumper, Community Support Coordinator, at 573-729-6264, or Lena at scenicriversind.org. Saturday, October the twenty-fifth, as a reminder, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the Al Brown Ball Field, they'll be hosting the Second Annual Salem Most Spectacular. There are also, let me see what else we got going on here. They have a creepy crawlie walk Thursday, October the thirtieth, from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. at the Tiger Trail, the Salem Upper Elementary. Trails for all ages. It's a five-dollar fundraiser for Salem High School Student Council and their newly formed Salem High School Rotary Interaction, or Interactive Club. Also, last but not least, just as a reminder, we have the Trunk or Treat on Fourth Street, October the thirty-first, from six to eight. For any information you need, you can contact Sergeant Chris Robbins or Corporal Derek Marfick from the Dent County Sheriff's Department to either donate or set up a station for that event. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight. And we'll move right along to our Public Works Director, Mr. Steve Payne. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor. Alderman?
Good evening.
I'm gonna try to keep this brief tonight. I'm gonna kick off with Water Department. They've done several water line repairs since we last spoke, three of which were over on Franklin Street. And big thanks to the Water Department for getting in there, knocking it out. Josh Hunt is actually here tonight. He was a big part of that. Since we lost our water lead man, Josh has stepped up and made sure a lot of the hands-on stuff's got done, so. We'd also like to welcome our new water lead man hire. He's not here tonight, but we hired Kyle Wofford, who had worked for the city, I don't know, probably two, three years ago, Chris? Really skilled at water fixes and such, so, and heavy equipment operation. He was also a mechanic, so he'll be a good addition to the team. I'm gonna jump over to the Electric Department. We're continued, continuing our work on the tree trimming and stuff. I know I mention that all the time, but it's a huge benefit to the public to not having those power lines tripped every time we have a windstorm or when the ice storms start happening. We also want to welcome, we have a new hire over at the Electric Department, a new electric journeyman lineman apprentice, Hunter Heilmann. And he came down to us from outside of St. Louis, former Navy CB. So, a lot of experience in kind of construction-related stuff, a lot of bucket time and electric lineman work and stuff. He is halfway roughly on his hours, so we'll get him into the apprenticeship and make sure he finishes out with us. He's real excited to be here and be a part of Salem, so. Construction crew, they're continuing to work over on the backside and all around, basically. The back and the far side of the Healthy Dent County facility over there, the gym. Our guys were just gonna improve upon the, was that, south side? Basically, the way cars parked down through there, you couldn't get an ambulance through. So, we wanted to improve upon that and fill in an area that was kind of considered ditch that folks would nose their vehicles into. So, we're getting curb and gutter all the way down through there. We're gonna change that to parallel parking. We've lengthened that down through there so that we can keep the same amount of parking spots roughly, get their dumpster down away from the building some more. And then, our construction lead man, Lloyd Sanderson, said, "We could go around the backside of this building where you have a problem getting around back here, and we could improve this by filling in and doing curb and gutter as well." So, we're gonna widen that out back there. We just asked for patience from the public while we work through that process, so. But, it's gonna be a huge benefit to that facility, so. Your Street Departments finalized a major dirtwork project over at the cemetery, which gave us more usable space. Conducted more pavement patches, and they're continuing to maintain the yard waste area and mowing at the airport. Picking up citywide brush, they were finishing that up as well, so. Our mechanics repaired, maintained multiple pieces of equipment. He'll be replacing two indoor gym lights for the pickleball court at Healthy Dent County. It was just taking a little bit to find a scissor lift for, you know, tall ceilings. So, he's gonna get in there and get that knocked out. Cemetery Crew, you know, we've absorbed one of our seasonals from the cemetery into the Street Department and by the name of Paul. And I space an apology, it's Paul's last name, but Paul was such a great employee. We were really excited to have him on the team full-time. So, we'll work at getting him a CDL, and he will assist with cemetery. He'll learn, well, he's already learned to dig graves, but he'll get better at it with time. And just on the subject of the cemetery, I did want to say, thirteen thousand graves that Devin was talking about, and this isn't like a task like Devin and the staff was given, the ladies up front, just to sit there and do. In particular, they do it in their spare time. So, the phones are ringing, and they're taking, and they're taking customers' information and issues that they might have and trying to work those and pay bills, and then they get right back into the logbooks. It's really an impressive thing, so. Thanks to them, so. I'm gonna flip this over. Before I move into, I wanna, I wanna thank somebody in my crew here. Did you have any questions for me before I do a presentation?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Approximately how many wells are in and around Salem that the City of Salem can pump from that you know of?
We have four active wells at this time. We do have a fifth well, our newest well. It's, if we had to rush that into production, we have it set up to where that we probably could get that pumping and going. But, we have Well Two, which is over at Third and Grand. If you've ever seen the old Fresno Railroad, you know, the railroad brick building over there by our substation, that's where Well Two is housed inside there. Well Four is over off of Third Street over by the high school. You can see it right there. Six, Well Six is over, our Street Department's over off of Truman, where the Truman Trailer Court was. So, you got Streets, and then you got Well Number Six there. And Well Eight is in the park. If you were to drive past the swimming pool, it's back in the back there, so. Yeah, and they're all functioning on a SCADA system. So, they kick off and on as needed and such, and there's programming in there to check and let us know if turbidity spikes. Because sometimes if we have earthquake action, it stirs up something in the sediment in the wells itself. Which is actually interesting to see, when they drilled the new well, we had DNR come in and film all the way down there. And you really get to see in those layers, I mean, there's sediment everywhere. So, that stuff, you know, it's real art to make sure you don't suck that up into the system, so.
So, with the turbidity, if it notices it, is it an automated system? Or is it a reporting system where you adjust the pump from pumping out of there?
I want to say it's automated, that it shuts off when it starts sensing above .9 on turbidity, Chris?
We've set, we've, we've got most wells at nine. We've turned one well down that subject, that we vowed by process of elimination, earthquakes.
Steve, Chris, can you come up to the podium, please? Sorry.
I should ask the subject matter expert at twenty-nine years to come on up, so.
Yeah, we have, most of our wells set at nine. And with nine in turbidity, it's almost undetectable. But, this one well, since we did a process of elimination, eliminated a lot of theories and found out that tremors in the New Madrid Fault can trigger turbidity in that well, we have turned that well down even more. And that way, when that turbidity hits seven in that well, that well kicks itself off and will not pump any turbid water.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, it is automated.
Do you know what the towers currently pump at, each individual tower, as far as the gallons per minute?
The towers theirself that don't actually pump, it's the wells that do the pumping.
Gotcha.
Each well pumps a different amount. Our slowest well, we slowed it down because of turbidity in it. We slowed it down to 126 gallons a minute. And our best well, the one over by the high school, pumps at 546 gallons a minute. So, every well varies as per the condition of the well and where that well's located at. You know, the ground structure and everything. So, we, we have perimeters on that SCADA system that we set for every well, and then the communications of the wells. And it all is based on pressure. The towers is water in reserve, but they keep the system pressure up because the elevation of the water, and that's why the location of the new well and tower is where it's at for the best locations for the height of the towers to keep the system pressure up and maintain the system pressure. We currently run our average system pressures of like 52.1, and we know how much pressure it takes to run the towers over and flush them, which we do from time to time. But, it takes every well running at full capacity to do that, to push the water up that high. But, we can tell by our system pressure of how much water we have in our towers.
Awesome. Thank you.
Chris had also pointed out that our SCADA system was getting a little old, and that he had recommended that we put, push that forward for getting some of those components renewed and stuff. So, kudos to him for making sure we're good to go, so. Any other questions?
That's all I got.
Okay. Alright, I had, I had the pleasure of having Josh Hunt come in tonight. Josh? Could you come on up? And Chris, I'm gonna let Chris talk about this, because Chris made this happen, and Josh made this happen in reference to our wastewater treatment plant.
Well, as you all know, that last year or earlier this year, I put our water in the tap water challenge. We come out third in the state. And what they do is they alternate this, Missouri Rural Water does, by things like that and systems as a whole. But, then this time of the year, they do individuals. And y'all know the, what happened back last November with the flood and everything down at the plant, where we took on four to six feet of water through that plant. And to tell you the truth, that plant was barely alive after that. It was on life support. And through the efforts of Josh and his knowledge and knowing who to reach out to and on other things and evaluating that plant, and we put a plan together, got people activated, and we were able, Josh was able to bring that plant back from life support to sustaining itself and then into recovery, and faster. We were impressed. As fast as this plant recovered through Josh's efforts and everything. And so, when it come up this time of the year for the individuals to be noted, I didn't want this to go unrecognized. And we appreciated it, but I wanted it to go further than that. So, when the nominations came available, I nominated Josh, and you have to give an explanation of why. So, I went in detail and explained to him and everything. All of Josh's efforts, what Josh does on a daily basis, the things we were confronting. I mean, in the middle of this flood, we are also, as you know, in this upgrade. So, very worse of this, not only getting the plant back to life again and everything, but dealing with what transpired and going forward with the upgrades, and then dealing with FEMA and everything else, working through all this at one time. You know, I felt like we need to recognize the efforts, you know, of Josh and for our team, for what we did and through Josh's knowledge and ability and going in the right direction and recovering this plant so fast. And then, when I nominated him and everything, the Missouri Rural Water contacted me and told me that Josh unanimously won Missouri's Wastewater Operator of the Year. And they said, but keep it-
Congratulations.
This is, this is the trophy. This is what they call the Water Drop Trophy. And believe me, it's easy to drop, because that thing is heavy. That is a beautiful trophy. And not only that, Missouri Rural Water, when they called me and everything, they said, they told me that Josh had won, and then they said, but keep it quiet. We don't want Josh to know. We want him to be surprised at the conference. So, I told Josh, I said, you're gonna go to the conference. And Josh said, I don't need any more hours. I don't need to go to the conference. And I said, Josh, you gotta go to the conference. And I was planning on going to the conference, but other matters come up, so I couldn't be there and everything. And I had to get Josh's jacket size, because along with the trophy, he got a jacket with all this information on it. And so, I said, okay, we'll keep it quiet. I told Josh, "You're going to the conference. I got you registered. You gotta go," and everything. And I wanted to be there to see the surprise on his face. And then low and behold, he stopped somewhere in town, and one of Missouri Rural Water's people happens to be in town and walks up to Josh and says, "Congratulations." Josh is like, "What for?" And they said, "You're Wastewater Operator of the Year." Then after they come back from the conference, me and Josh were together in the vehicle, and Josh wanted to thank me for all the kind words and stuff he said and everything I said. And I said, "Well, Josh, it was just the truth. I put down the truth of your efforts and, and your knowledge and how we appreciate what you have done. And that's the reason that you've got this award." And he can come up and show it to you closer if y'all would like to see it. And it's, it's a beautiful award.
Yeah.
And this is just, this is just the beginning of the things that I want our team recognized for, that we have nominations are now open for Systems of the Year, and I plan on putting our water in our wastewater system in for Systems of the Year. And hopefully, when the Taste Challenge comes around, the first part of next year, we come out number one in that.
Yeah. Cool. Good deal. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I've got one thing to say. I really do appreciate Chris's effort to put me in for this award. It, it means a lot to get recognized for, uh, you know, just doing my daily job, so. Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
While you're here, Josh, I want to also thank you too, for Josh's knowledge, even after the flood. Uh, Josh's knowledge of the wastewater treatment facility helped us plan a little bit better in case of another natural disaster event like that had happened. And, uh, just to personally thank you for that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Let's give him another round of applause. Come on.
Do you have any further questions?
No.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Stacy, do you have anything to report tonight? Okay. Ms. Carrie, do you have anything to report tonight, ma'am? She's doing that-
The smile was for you. Did you see that?
She's smiling because she's avoiding me teasing her, so.
So you have the monthly report in your packet, but I just want to, uh, kind of ad lib there. For Girls Night Out, we saw 181 people at our booth. And they registered for the Women Fuzzy Door Prize that we had there. Janet Petty was the winner of that, and she was excited about that. But we had some, the attendees that stopped by, they heard the information on how economic development could help them as community members, future entrepreneurs, or even business owners at the time. So that was, that was good to let them know that they had support, should they need it. And then down underneath the scholarship for the NREDA. NREDA is an acronym for Nat, National Rural Economic Development Association. And it's exciting to me because I was awarded a scholarship. It covers both the conference in Nashville, Tennessee, and a membership for the rest of the year. That's a value of about $2,000. And I had been looking online, and I wanted to attend the conference, and I wanted to have access to the webinar and the various resources that they showed. But it didn't really feel like that it was financially feasible for us. And so I applied for a scholarship. And while I, I didn't, I didn't really put much thought into it afterwards, but I still applied, and I still was trying to see if I could kind of get Salem on the map, so to speak. And so I was awarded that, and they reached out to me. And so I get to attend the conference free of charge, as well as, um, uh, the, have access to the webinars, resources and all that online for the remainder of the year. That gives us a good, um, opportunity to find out if it truly is driven to small rural communities like I think it is. And so we can find out and then maybe budget for it next budget.
Awesome.
Yeah. The summit in Martin, Tennessee was powerful. I think it was, um, rather than someone, a list of speakers standing up there, I think it was more like an open dialogue between, um, people that had been in the profession for a long time, as well as novice. And so they turned it into what I felt like was an, um, exchange of ideas. And then, of course, resource sharing, which is powerful, because sometimes we get in our own little world, and we think that Salem, Missouri, or Dent County, they're dealing with, uh, challenges that are unique. They're not. They are widespread. And so the thing to do is not let the state lines or county lines divide us, but rather open doors to resources and ideas and exchange of ideas, and to, to garner information from other individuals that have either been in this for a while or are facing the same challenges that we are. So, um, I was invited to a Zoom discussing Placer AI. It's a software that, um, the data tracking is really powerful. But unfortunately, um, having a, uh, being mindful of the expenditures that, such as, you know, what we need to do, we need to be budget conscientious. I don't feel like that that is something that Salem is geared up for at this time. So, um, we just kind of had to engage in conversation and then, and then we'll just kind of push it off to the back burner and continue to do research to see if there becomes more affordable, maybe. As popularity grows, maybe it will become more affordable. But at this time, it, I don't think it's for Salem. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I just wanted to say thank you. I've been asking you, and you got to put it on here about how many people have viewed our certified site here in Salem. And there was 157 views, but thank you for putting that out there for me. I think that's it.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Board Report. I'll start with Alderman Dent.
I have no report.
Alderman Whelan?
None.
Alderman Letchworth?
I have nothing to report.
And Alderman McKenzie?
Nothing to report.
This time, I'll need a, next up, motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privileges.
Make a motion when going to closed session?
And do I have a second?
I second the motion.
This time, I'll call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?